Good evening and welcome to the first part of our Barrington School Board meeting. We'll be meeting with the BEA. So I'm going to call this meeting to order and we'll have our conversation.
You asked for a meeting.
Yeah, we did. And we appreciate you taking the time to meet with us. So I think first and foremost, we just wanted to say that. So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. I think the first item that was on our agenda referred to the reduction in teaching position, which I know the last meeting that I kind of spoke to a little bit because I know that you were discussing some things and I brought up my concerns about moving forward with possibly getting rid of one of the classroom positions. Because I know that it's out there for discussion. I think my question would be, where did that come from? Where did that decision come from? So I think that was one of the things that we wanted to talk to you about a little bit and figure out what your thoughts were on that.
So that's not a board level decision. We don't determine grade level configurations and things like that. But my understanding, and certainly the superintendent can step in, is, you know, we always look at class sizes. And there was a one-year position that we didn't continue this year. And looking at the class sizes for next year, they're all well within our school board policy. And so that would be my understanding why.
And are you referring to the policy as stated or are you referring to the best practice piece of it that's attached? Like the policy with the figures that you have for the numbers for each grade level and then there's like a best practice piece that goes along with it?
With the policy with the numbers.
The state recommends what? Twenty-two or what is it?
Yeah.
And we're at eight, we say eighteen, right?
They actually have tentatively removed class size in general. They used to have a much higher threshold Ben Barrington has. I searched around on the DOE site to see if I could get something tangible to bring tonight, but...
It's disappeared?
It has disappeared.
Really?
Yes.
Well, because they've made comments about you could have a class that's as big as 50 with one teacher and one parent.
Exactly. And so they have removed their recommendations. So I tried to find some language to support those statements that have been out and about and I couldn't put my hands on anything.
But when we crafted our best practices, it was back then it was...
Well below the state average, yeah.
What, like four or five kids below, yeah.
You were endorsing the federal guidelines.
Okay.
That support having 18 students in grades K through three. So I know that. So I was wondering about that, like where those numbers came from. So I think in just looking at numbers, it's a little, it's just a little disappointing to have that be the go-to. Because I know, and we'll be talking about it a little bit later, addressing student behaviors is going to be a big piece. And when we think about the fact that increasing, if you're getting rid of a student, or I mean a classroom position, you're also increasing students in the classroom. And we're already having some difficulties with student behaviors, which we will address in a bit. So therefore, that could increase as well. And if we're really looking at the best interest of students and their learning, I guess I would just find it interesting that you would move to that piece of cutting a classroom position. Especially because as voters voted in, they voted in the budget as is, thinking of all of the positions that we have available. And now, we're going to not be having one of those positions. And I know that it's really hard to get those back once we don't have them, right? And if we use that money, that money is there, I understand, but, you know, I also know that things can come up and we can end up using that money.
What is, what's the class size without the extra teacher? What is that class, what is that grade level going to be at?
So right now, so for next year, if we kept it at second grade at five, so right now, second grade has 93 students in the grade level. First grade has 89. So four out of the five classrooms would add one child.
Okay. So what's the average class size?
The average class size, we can't do partial students, but, so some classes would have 18 and like two would have 19.
And at the other grade levels, what's their average class size?
So first grade would be at 15, second grade would be at either 18 or 19, third would be at 18, and fourth would be at 19.
And kindergarten would be at 14, 15 as well, right?
Well, we don't know for next year, but for this year, yes, 15.
So from second, third, am I reading, so third, fourth, fifth would all be around 18 kids?
Mm-hmm. So it goes, if I round up, 15, 18, 19, 18, 19.
So is the concern driven more by the class size because the other grade levels have that same class size or is it more the behavior?
I would say that it's probably more the behavior right now, but class size plays into that.
Absolutely.
Right? And we don't, and of course too, we all know the building that's going on within the community. I mean, I know of somebody that I've met, I've met two people who are going to have first graders coming in to the already existing group of K students that are going there. So, I mean, there's always that piece too. And I know one year when we didn't have, I think we had a teacher on leave of absence and I want to say we got seven new students that year in first grade. Do you remember that? It was just two years ago, I believe. Not this past, but...
Yeah, I think there were only four new students and I didn't think there were seven, but I would have to go back and look.
Yeah. And it makes a big difference, right? So, and I think then, on top of that, so, so I guess my question would be, would it be, the decision was strictly based on class sizes? Like what, why was that the determining factor on getting rid of a teaching?
That was a district administration level decision. That was not, as I said, the board does not make those decisions. That's not in our purview to decide grade level configurations.
And never have.
So then that would be my question, I guess, for you then, Deanna. Because that doesn't sound like what, I mean, just to be blunt, that doesn't sound like what you presented in our meeting over here.
No, actually, that's exactly what I presented. So there is, it's twofold. It's one, we want to keep in line with policy and honoring tax rates, but also we have shortfalls due to adequacy funds and education freedom accounts. So we have to look at the big picture looking forward of how we're going to sustain programming and positions and maintain appropriate class size.
I remember asking a question to you about...
So I'm, we routinely have conversation about we need to look at class sizes and make sure we're making appropriate recommendations. It's always hard, if you look historically, strangely, we have been at around 100, sometimes more than 100, students per grade level. And then, when we get 86, 89 kindergarteners registering, but we've already issued teacher contracts, like we can't adjust those in the moment. So then when those students come up to first grade, we do what we did two years ago, which was, let's reduce by one. We didn't lose that position, we brought it back the next year, but let's reduce by one because the numbers were so low. And there's only a three-student difference between when we did that two years ago than what we're doing currently.
Okay. We can go with that. I know I asked a specific question of where did you get, how, who was telling you to make the decision?
Well, we are directing her to be fiscally responsible, particularly because there are so many financial unknowns. We don't know what our IDA grant will be, we don't know what our Title I grant will be, we don't know about the adequacy grant, we don't know how many students are going to be utilizing EFAs. So there's a lot out there that have significant, or can have significant financial impacts. And so we are trying to be as prudent as possible so that we don't end up in a very sticky widget where we have, we can't offer other things to students that we have historically offered. And so, you know, we are, the board is tasked with trying to provide as high-quality education as we can and being strong financial stewards. That is what the taxpayers enlist us to do. And so, they do vote on the budget, but at no point in our budget presentation do we say, this is X number of teaching positions, this is it. And I think the voters understand, when we're talking in October for something that's 13 months from now, you know, that things can change. And that's why they have bottom-line decision-making. And so, we are, you know, we did task the superintendent with trying to be fiscally responsible because we don't know what's coming. And these are very strange times in the education field that we're living in. And so, you know, I understand the concern that it, you know, it feels, but we didn't riff anyone, we didn't make wide-scaled saying, you know, blanketly, every class will be at 20. I mean, realistically, could we remove a kindergarten teacher and still be within our policy? Yep. Could we remove a first-grade teacher and still be within our policy? Yep. But we're trying to look and say, where, as kids get older, it's reasonable to expect they can be in slightly bigger classes. And so that, I would think, is how the decision was made by the leadership team.
That was actually my recommendation when we were looking at the total numbers, knowing the concerns at the kindergarten level. I was not comfortable reducing first grade. And I was just like, okay, so let's look at second grade, we only have a few kid difference there, they'll be a year older, a year more mature, and, you know, if we're looking to be as fiscally responsible as we can, then that was where my suggestion was to look.
And I think that this decision was also made with the backdrop of the ongoing Behavior Task Force that's hopefully going to make some improvements for all concerned. All right?
Well, and I would think that it would be the opposite, actually, because if behaviors we know are a big concern, and yes, we do have the Behavior Task Force in place, I would think that you wouldn't want to increase classes at all going forward. And we'll, again, I know we'll talk about that in a moment. So I think as far as the fiscally responsible piece, were there other areas that you looked at before cutting a teaching position? Because to, again, best practice is to make those cuts as far away from the students as possible. So were there any admin positions looked at? Were there any other types of positions, were any other areas looked at?
So I would just say the original conversation or purpose for doing it wasn't financially motivated. So like I said, two years ago, we did the same thing with first grade. The numbers were low coming out of kindergarten, so the recommendation was, let's stick within our class size, what's reasonable lower than our class size. And we didn't bring in a one-year position for that first grade. So if there wasn't all of this uncertainty going on financially across the state, we would have still had that same conversation. So we weren't looking to save or recoup money. It is just with everything happening so quickly, it certainly is a supporting factor. But we weren't looking like, oh my goodness, you know, we're going to, this is terrible times, we're looking to recoup money. So that wasn't the origin, that didn't, wasn't where the conversation originated, wasn't the sole purpose for this discussion.
I guess I'm just hearing two different messages, really. Because I am hearing the fiscal piece of it and I am hearing the classroom size piece of it. And initially, I had heard the fiscal piece of it. That's more of what you had presented in our meeting that we had had. And I do know, referring to when we did the same thing a few years ago with the teacher who was on a leave of absence, we did end up with first-grade classrooms that were higher than we would expect as well, because we did have move-ins. So I, I mean, I just think that that's something that could happen. And I would like to think that you would look, as I said, as far away from classrooms as you can if you're trying to make any kind of fiscal decisions. And that was mentioned, so I know that is part of it. And it makes sense, it would be. And so I guess the answer to my question is that you didn't really look in other places because you weren't looking fiscally, you were looking more in numbers. So it sounds like there were no other decisions for that made. Is that correct? Okay, just so I understand. Okay, I don't know.
I can say something just for the board. I'm not going to take forever to speak for everyone, but I can say in practice, we are very conscious of adding layers of administration over frontward-facing teaching positions. We take that, anytime we add anything to the administration, to the SAU building or things like that, one of the big thoughts we have is, how is this going to affect directly the education of the kids and not just have another layer of administration? And we are sensitive to that. So if we deem a position worthy, it's after a lot of hand-wringing, so.
Well, that's good to know. And I guess that actually would bring me to another point, like the operations manager that we had gotten last year. I do know that when you had an April meeting, I think it was April last year, and it was both you and Moira who had mentioned that we would need to revisit that possibly and see if that was something that we, because you had heard in the community that people were mentioning that we were a little top-heavy admin. So have you revisited that position as well? Like, I mean, I'm just thinking in ways of, as a taxpayer myself, I get that piece of it, right? The fiscal part of it. I don't want to have to pay any more of my taxes either. But at the same time, when I work here and see things, it's a little different, right? So I'm just wondering if that has been revisited. I know that we had talked about maybe attaching grant funding that might come in for that. And it's nothing against any one individual personally, obviously, because we're all wonderful individuals that work here. But it's, you know, it's more coming down to those positions that we have. And if we're thinking about making cuts anywhere, I mean, I think that we really need to look at all levels. That's all I guess I have to say about it. Did you want to say anything about? I'm still hoping that we can remedy it and not have that be the case, because I am afraid that we're going to end up with larger class sizes and behaviors are going to be an even bigger problem.
I just, I agree. I don't think I have anything else to offer that...
Okay.
But, yeah, I agree. And I worry about getting it back. But again, if it, you know...
And we have the history of that, you know, if, it's a fluid thing and it's always, like, we've had classes go through where they have 115 kids, where we haven't kept the same number of teachers per grade level when we had 89 kids, you know? So it, that's why it gets looked at every year and what makes the most sense. And like, just for the public watching, it's mostly the second grade that changed the number of teachers, correct?
Yes, they're currently at five, so they would stay at five for next year.
Five, okay. And, and they'll each have maybe one more kid in their class than they do this year for next year? So I just want the public online to know that when we're talking about changing class sizes, it's not a dramatic change, it's an increase of one student per class. They might have the impression that we've increased class sizes by 25% and we haven't.
Right, no, that makes sense. I mean, one student can make a big difference.
Oh, for sure.
I mean, especially as we start talking about what we're going to discuss soon.
And also just, one thing the board has tasked Deanna with, and she's been spot-on with it, has been, we are all aware of all development happening in town. And we are tracking move-ins to the, to the street level of how many kids are coming in on a daily basis, just about, right?
And I'm frankly shocked that our numbers have remained as stable as they are. Like, as soon as we have 10 come in, it seems like we lose 10. We have been remarkably stable. I keep thinking we're ready to break ground up there because it's going to happen, but...
But overall, birth rates across the state are down. And we're one of the few communities where our enrollment has remained stable, most are down.
That's because of all developments keeping us steady, whereas other districts are going this one.
And we do have some data from the demographic study that indicates we may go up. So we're trying to be very proactive. We've already met with architects to ensure, you know, that we have plans in place for when and if an addition needs to happen, because we don't want to be surprised by it. But at this point, the developments that are really have filled are more mature families because they're fairly costly next to the town hall and others are just now becoming available, like next to the Irving. So that's why it just continues to be...
Those ones at Irving are interesting. I drove in there, they're one-car garages. Like, that doesn't speak to like a big family, you know? It speaks more of a young couple or a retired couple. I don't know, but...
When you look at the average cost of a house in this town right now is north of $700,000. People are, young people aren't coming in just out of family. The people that are buying seven, eight, nine hundred, a million-dollar house have raised their family and they're coming into, henceforth, why you don't see as many kids in here. There's no affordable housing being built in this town right now.
We still, however, have a younger average age in our town as compared to the state, which is interesting. So we'll see how that, it may benefit us to have NISTEC do another demographic study sooner than later, just because the dynamics in our town have changed so rapidly, to see that some of those indicators remain.
A bunch of hipsters running around Kalos, that's what we need.
So we did want to talk about the letter that we sent, BEA and the BPA had sent you regarding that DEI letter. I'll just refer to it as a DEI letter because I don't know what else to call it. Requesting that the school district or superintendents, you know, across the state sign indicating that they do not, or will not have any diversity, equity, and inclusion plans or curriculum or, you know, however it was worded, it was very vague.
Can I get clarity, like, it's not a DEI letter, right? What is it called or what's the...
It is a request for certification for grant funds in Title VI.
Okay, so, all right, I just want to...
But within that letter, you have to, they have a statement there that says, when you sign this letter, you're certifying that your district will not engage in any DEI practices. So it's embedded within that.
So that's the piece that I'm referring to.
Okay, all right.
Sorry. I don't know what else to call it.
No, and that's...
It is so vague.
That's the headline part of it, right? That's what people are...
That's what people are...
Well, and it's just to, for clarification, for people who don't know what it is, it is, we know there's a lot of lawsuits going on, there's an injunction right now around it. And, you know, part of it feels a little illegal, sneaky per se, because we certify that we're going to follow federal grant processes every year. We actually have that on our agenda tonight. And so to turn around and ask nationwide school districts to certify it again was, some people feel like, a way to point out that particular practice. So that's kind of where we're all sitting and waiting at this point.
We just wanted to bring that up again. We did send a letter to the, all of the board, asking that you, that the district not sign it. We feel like it's vague and, like a lot of people do, it's vague, it's hard to even certify what it is you're like, what do they even mean by that? Are they going to come back later and they're going to change the definition of that and find us guilty of something? We just, and we weren't able to get that letter before the board made the vote whether or not to sign it. That was on us, we intended to, but we just weren't able to get it before then. So I guess our position right now is, we would like to, we would love it if you would reconsider it and possibly consider retracting it. The whole thing's vague and it's, it seems unclear as to what you're certifying and we're concerned about the ramifications of that from the board.
I believe the date has passed in which we're allowed to retract it, but I would have to double-check that.
If it helps, I can explain why, I don't want to use the word "in favor" because I wasn't in favor of signing it, but why I was, okay, voting to have Deanna sign it. We don't have anything in the district specifically labeled as DEI. In my work, professional work, I, I work in this region, and if you ask me to define what DEI is in our Seacoast region, it's more disability, learning disability, physical disability, it's financial, it's socioeconomic status, it's, it's things that the federal government was threatening to take the money away from us that we already do support, to promise that we don't do other things that we don't do. So, now, I have no qualms against DEI initiatives, but we don't actively do those in our district. We do have a high number of free, free reduced lunch folks. We have kids who receive Title, Title I who we could threaten to have lost that money. And that's, there's certainly students who are, you know, not the majority race, not the majority religion in Barrington, but the majority minority, if that makes sense, tends to be financially, financially insecure, food insecure, housing insecure. That's our predominant. And to, not knowing at all, to hear that we could lose $700,000 that goes towards them, it's unfair. It's totally unfair to say, sign this and sign your, for me personally, sign against your best intentions. Sign it or else, that's duress. I mean, that's signing under duress. And I don't like signing under duress. But I don't like not being able to support those folks either. It's such a conundrum and it's, you know, and the, I'd say probably the biggest, I don't know if this is the right way to say it, DEI thing, if you will, that we do in the district is probably, was that transgender, the transgender policy that we, I was the one who made the vote to put that back in the committee, which pains me as being somebody who wrote one at the district I work at. So it's like, yeah, it's super unfair to be put in a position where if you sign something, for me personally, you feel unclean, but to not sign it, you feel unclean. That doesn't mean the board wouldn't reconsider or talk about reconsidering if we can, just maybe trying to paint my...
And also with, if... And also with the, if, if your fears come to fruition and, and this is the beginning of something, that enforcement is gonna change or the, the way that this is gonna be interpreted changes, this board is not for going down that road. I think what, in my, just speaking for myself, what concerned me most was when Katie told me it was at least eight positions.
It's, yeah, it's eight, it's eight positions written into our grants.
And if I know anything, which I, if anyone can put, pin down this administration, good luck. But one thing I have seen is that they are taking receipts and they are coming after those districts that don't acquiesce. And I could virtue signal and say, "I'm not gonna tell Deanna to sign the letter." But I'd be gambling with professionals that deal with some of the kids that most need that attention. And I was not terrified, but I was certainly nervous about playing that game of chicken right now.
And I think for me, that, that kind of Jason and God both hit the same point for me. I didn't think that we were doing anything by refusing to sign it. It wasn't gonna affect, in my opinion, the way our policies are and how we treat the, the students and staff that work in this building. And these, all of these buildings, I should say. And it was extremely scary to me that when we started looking at seven or eight positions that are grant funded, we don't have the money to pay for them positions. And so, it, like it or not, the five of us sit up here and could be forced to turn around and say, "You know what? That, you know, you're talking about wanting to keep a second grade teacher." We probably would have forty kids in each classroom because we would have to reduce teaching staff to take that money to, to cover the, the requirements for special education. So, for me, and I, I echo exactly what Jason says, and I, and I won't speak for the rest of the board, but I believe we all felt the same way. It irritated the heck out of me to think that my hands were being tied behind my back and I had two choices. Either I, as a decision maker, that the voters elected us to do, to stand, to potentially lose seven hundred thousand dollars and we don't have the ability to go back to the taxpayers and say, "Hey, we need an extra seven hundred thousand." So, it forces us to make decisions that are counterproductive to what we wanna do. So, for me, I'm like, "I'm gonna vote to sign this thing because it's not gonna affect how we, it doesn't affect how we treat people and hopefully we'll keep our money."
What we need is an endowment. So, you're like Harvard. That way you can just do whatever the hell you want and.
You know, Congress specifically called out in the letter, right?
I guess our, we under, we do. We, we really do understand the position that you're in. It's not an easy position. There are a lot of things coming down the pike and no one knows what's really gonna happen and what's not. But we just feel as if, um, the districts need to stick together and not allow us to be bullied into signing something that is vague. And our concern is that at some point, the district and specific teachers can be, they can define it any way they want to. They can change how the definition is and then they could start saying that, you know, "These teachers are doing this," or "They're teaching that," or it, it, you know, it could just snowball and it could get so much worse. And then you may be forced to treat teachers differently than you are now. So, to say that you're not, you don't have any of those programs and you're not doing it now, that's hard to say. We feel as if that's hard to say because it is also vague. So, we do understand your position. Um, we just, I'd hope that you would reconsider.
See if it's even possible.
Well.
Because none of us like the.
Be certain that we.
No, I, we, yeah, none of us think you do.
Yeah, and be certain that this is, as, as things evolve, it's not like we're putting this in the rearview mirror and that's the end of it. It's, this is gonna be watched and.
See how the lawsuit plays out.
Yeah. But to be clear, I, I just wanna make sure. You guys are against the letter, but you would not be for putting at risk those seven or eight positions to sign that letter, right?
Well, no, I don't think any of us would be wanting that to happen by any means. We're not, we're all for keeping positions.
Right.
Right.
Thank you.
I don't like the bullying aspect of it.
No, no, no.
None of us do.
I really don't.
Like, you know.
Have you guys looked at the, at the list that's posted around who has signed and not signed in New Hampshire? Like, I think we're the only state in the nation that our Department of Ed chose to.
Post the letters. They posted the letters.
Oh, they did?
Put it out there publicly. But out of the hundred and seven districts plus charter schools, I think there's five or six that didn't sign it. Because I think everybody's feeling the same way, like, wha-what do, what do we do without our grant funds?
And I think it's easier for them to pick on the districts that didn't sign it when there's so few.
Yeah.
If we all stuck together and there were more that did, didn't sign it, then it's a little bit harder to enforce that.
It was interesting to look as well at, um, the, the districts who signed right when the letter came out on April fourth versus the ones who waited until the last day. We waited till the last day, like, we were struggling with it.
I wouldn't wanna be in that position to have to make that decision. I, I, we completely understand that.
Well, and I think there are districts that have very called out, spelled out, D E I policies and D E I positions. And therefore, um, you know, they had to attest that they weren't doing things that they were doing. And for us, it's like, it, us attesting to this at this moment doesn't change anything, you know? And, um, and I guess that's why we all, we all didn't like it. But trying to, trying to gamble seven hundred thousand dollars in seven or eight positions, you know? I, I wasn't comfortable doing that. I'll put my money where my mouth is. I'm less comfortable putting other people's jobs and other people's money where my mouth is, so.
That's quite a mouth.
And I, and I don't, I, I don't think the current political climate down in Washington would, looks too heavily on the fact that, oh, hundred and seventeen districts in New Hampshire chose not to sign this paper. I don't think they care. I think there's been times when there's been some polit, some, a little different political flavor where you could get a, a bunch of people together and say, "Hey, we're not gonna do this." And maybe it, it sways the ship a little bit. But I don't think the current, um, uh, political climate in Washington right now really cares that that fine, we'll just, we won't spend that money. I think that's the way they look at it. And I, I, I will agree with Mark. It's, you know, I don't wanna be that one. I'd rather face some people and have, like you folks are asking, "Why did we agree to do this?" Than to, to face nine thousand people in this town because we had to terminate seven or eight positions or we had to put forty kids in a classroom.
I think this is a biggie, so we probably should start moving on to it.
This is, really, the biggest thing that we really wanted to talk about was addressing the student behavior problems.
So, I, I think my first question would be, I, a statement and question. I know that you've created the Behavior Task Force because you had heard the message of behaviors were increasing. We were having more difficulties within classrooms. I was disappointed that there weren't any teachers on this Behavior Task Force. I know that in your letter that went out to families, it said that there were, um, you know, with a bunch of high stakeholders in there. But I feel like you left out the most important stakeholders, the teachers, the students because some of your middle school students per, even perhaps could have participated in, in given, in their input on it. And, and parents, you know, they're huge stakeholders in this as well. So, that was a little disappointing. Um, I guess, where are we going with it? I know that we have some things outlined of, you know, next steps and all. I have heard that some of those next steps involve, um, a lot of teachers' professional development, which, um, that one kind of rubs me the wrong way just because you have, like, two-thirds of your staff have been here for a long time, veteran teachers. I honestly don't know how much more PD you can give us on managing student behaviors. We're, there, most of us are pulling out every trick we have. I know personally, I have, I've read books on it. I mean, we've had books that we've been given within district over the years. Explosive Child way back. That one child just a couple of years ago, that book, right? So, we've, we've had speakers, we've had a lot of this already. So, I don't know that PD is the answer, honestly. And, you know, I, I teach brain-based neurological, like, kids learn what, their brain. They learn about the amygdala, they learn about their prefrontal cortex, they learn how, you know, why their body is having them behave this way. And, you know, we do a lot of that in the classroom already. So, there's so much that we're already doing. And we can't manage the behaviors still. And it's not, PD's not the answer.
Or it's not the only answer.
Or the only, right. It's not the only answer.
There's, and it's across the board. I mean, you're talking about all grade levels. Um, there are behaviors that interfere with the learning.
On a daily basis.
And it interferes with the teacher's ability to teach. And it isn't fair to anyone in that situation. It's very difficult.
Especially those students who are there who want to learn.
So, I think a lot of it is our, is our response to that behavior. Like, that's the big piece, is how are we going to respond? And help these students, which are in helping the other students and the teachers and, yeah.
So, I'm on that little task force and, um, a couple things. Your, your, this input is coming, okay? And I think when the task force was called together, I was surprised at the outset that there weren't educators sitting at the table. There was.
Classroom educators.
Classroom educators. They're educators, but not classroom educators. And I said as much to Deanna, and I said, "I think we should have teachers, classroom educators, sitting here sooner than later." I think that was my exact quote. And I think what the response was, they wanted to have some sort of framework put together and then bring in more people to, to fine tune it. And, um, my other comment to them was, any result of this that does not increase a teacher's ability to conduct a class without disruption is not something I'm gonna be able to support going back to the board. That is the end-all be-all. It's not to necessarily just support individual kids. It's to make sure that the other seventeen kids in that classroom and that teacher can do their jobs, which is to teach and to learn without disruption. And that is what the goal of this task force should be. So, when the time comes and we circle back with whatever framework that they have come up with, I'm gonna be very interested to hear what teachers think as far as whether it's professional development that's needed, if it's changes from the administration that is needed, more supports. I don't know what else is needed because I don't sit in that classroom with y'all. But that, but hearing from educators, hearing from parents, hearing from kids, my kids are, have the witness stuff. A drastic change needs to happen and to get Barrington back to what it was. And it's, you know, something, something's happened and it's very evident to all involved. And you're gonna see, at least from my perspective, my support, and I think a lot of us feel the same way. But I'm not gonna speak for the other four of us, so.
I would just say we're just getting started, like, we're scratching the surface. And you all who were in the classroom with the kids every day, we, we absolutely need, we, we just, we wanted a starting point. So, it's like each layer. Um, but you, we wanted to give you initial thoughts to have you go, "Absolutely not, yes, add this, no, thank you," and to start to refine. Uh, but what we're lacking is, the middle school did it a couple of years ago. We don't have a district-wide, you know, like, code of conduct and behavior matrix per se. And I think that inconsistency is tough on you all, tough on kids, tough on families. So, we do need families. And I've had a lot of family discussions this year and it's been really interesting and super valuable where, you know, I had a couple parents come in and say, you know, "You gave," not me personally, but my child earned this for a consequence. We really think this would have been more effective for them. So, I wanna, I wanna hear what parents and you all think, like, how do we get everybody back on track? Because you've been here a lot longer than I have and I've seen a drastic change in, you know, the decade. So, it, um, like, to Garth's point, like, to, to get it back to that level of learning and classroom expectation is.
And respect, to be honest. I mean, I cannot believe, some of the things I'm hearing in the horror stories, I'm hearing not just from the kids, but from the parents as well. I think by setting expectations early and being consistent throughout every building so that parents understand, "This is what's gonna happen, you know, and you better educate your child appropriately or else." Because this is, this is, and having, making sure that we're following through with it and that you have the supports from every part of the building is critical, so.
That's good to hear. It, it's good to hear. I mean, I appreciate you sharing your feelings on that. Because sometimes when you have these committees and, and we're not part of them, there's sort of these mysterious committees.
Oh, I hate committees. No, I do.
What are they doing and what are they talking about? And how come they're not asking us? Why are they not asking us? Because we're the ones that are in it every day. So, it's good to hear what your perspective is on that.
We went, we went tier three first, right? Like, where are our most severe, where, where's the impact up there? And what are we doing about it? And are we doing it consistently across the district? And we need to follow that through to the tier one piece.
And I know you started with the younger grades and I understand that. But, um, the middle school really needs to be considered heavily. It's, it's a, yeah.
And even in the parent communication, it was like, "Oh, we're going to do this over the summer and we've already decided, uh-uh, that's too late." Like, we, we need to have something in place for the start of the school year. So, you will, you will hear it this week, like, please come, help us support what we're, all need to be doing together to, to get some consistency and some, some guardrails around what our classrooms are looking at.
While this is not the, I mean, not a problem that's unique to Barrington, I mean, every district in, in New Hampshire's dealing with it. I've had friends that are teachers across the country that are dealing with it and there's districts in Iowa and Ohio, you know, wherever else.
Yeah, it's all.
Believe it or not, I think we're the only district in New Hampshire that's went so far as to start a task force to figure this out and to start.
Heard anybody else. They're all asking me what we're doing, so.
We're trying to be proactive and we, we can't wait to hear the input, so, because it's gotta be meaningful change.
Have, are you planning on coming into classrooms to see what's going on in the classrooms? I mean.
You want me in your classroom?
I've invited, I have invited board members before and nobody's taken me up on it yet.
I'm in classrooms every day, so I don't, I don't, like.
I know that you see it, yes, for your position, right? But absolutely, come on, come on in. You're wel, you're welcome anytime.
I mean, so, you know, we did focus on, you know, tier three in the, on the task force because of course, those students that need that level of support are the ones that are being the most disruptive, right? But we also talked about, while, you know, they're the ones who are blowing out classrooms and having classrooms have to evacuate these things. They have to be tier three at that level, Judy.
One would think so. How many, what's the percentage of tier two and tier three kiddos do we have? What would you say?
So, hold on, define tier three for me. We might be talking about.
Next question. What is the criteria for determining that? Well, I would say tier three would be a kiddo who's picking up chairs and throwing them across the room.
Absolutely.
Threatening with scissors.
So, I don't think we're saying they have to be on an individual education plan in order to be tier three.
Oh, absolutely not.
Demonstrating tier three behaviors.
No, and an I U P is, that, that's not even in the equation for me right now in that.
I don't think anyone would argue that children throwing furniture or having classrooms to evacuate aren't tier three.
Again, well, I don't think so.
But, um, and again, kids at tier three are getting tier one, tier two, and tier three support. But, um, we also talked about whether or not there were other, um, things that needed to be looked at, at a tier one level, like social, emotional curriculums and things like that, that, you know, the district years ago adopted responsive classroom. Is that meeting, is that as a tier one, meeting the needs of our populated, our, our newly evolved population that we seem to have? That's something that classroom teachers will be a part of the deciding of, like, is it meeting the needs of the students and the greater good? You know, that's not something we as a board are gonna weigh in on and say, "Yes, or you're gonna use this curriculum." We, like, in my sixteen years on the board, we've never mandated a curriculum, you know? So, you know, there's, there are gonna be lots of facets to addressing it. And it is, it's a big problem and it's a societal problem and, you know, there's not enough mental health supports. We're better positioned than a lot of districts because we have a district-wide social worker, we have a district-wide B C B A. So, you know, there are some, you know, we have more supports than some districts.
We also are lacking in some things because, like, even the building that I am in, we don't have a behavior coach at all. And we're kindergarten and preschool, we're the foundation of where kids start to learn how to be a student. And parents learn how to parent their new. kids start to learn how to be a student. And parents learn how to parent their new students, right? So we don't even have a behavior coach there. And that's disappointing. So would that be something that you'd consider adding to the mix as well? I think it's greatly needed. And I guess I'd want to see us define, because I honestly can't tell you what the criteria is for determining the student who is tier three, tier two, tier one. I would know. But, um, I don't think we have anything written down anywhere.
That's exactly what we need to work on. And there's tremendous inconsistencies across the district. So that's why having that, bringing the people together who work predominantly with those tier three students to, to hear what is happening and have that collective conversation. That's why we started there. So-
I mean, based on what we've been doing in the past for tier two and tier three, right now, and, and I can only speak to kindergarten right now because that's the position I'm in, but right now, the kindergarten classroom that is coming into first grade is, there are over 25% of the kids who are, who would be considered tier two or tier three. That's huge. We don't have a behavior coach. And we have teacher assistants in the classroom. They're coming here and they're not going to have that. I mean, it's, I, I think you're going to be very surprised at what happens next year in first grade. And then those students will be going into second grade, the, the grade level that's only going to have five classrooms. So that brings me back to our first point that we talked about this evening. Uh, you know, I think that we really need to be mindful of what is happening in classrooms when we're talking about reducing classroom sizes as well. And, and do you know the percentages of tier two and tier three for grades one to through four? Not to mention, and one through eight. I mean, really, I don't know any of them. You might not have some, you might have some figures on middle school. But I mean, I think looking at those percentages, I think before you make decisions, you need to know some of those figures, some of that data, right? Um, so I think those would be some of my points on it. I know you guys are dealing with a hot where you are as well.
Yeah. I, I think that, that the important thing is, is knowing, you know, where this is headed and that teachers are going to be heavily involved in these decision-making, the decision-making process, because it's having a huge impact in so many ways. It's impacting the learning environment, it's impacting teachers and their health.
It's your quality of life. I'm sorry, but, yeah.
You have teachers leaving the profession left and right across the country.
Yeah.
I know it's not a Barrington problem. Um, but it's, it's a, it's a huge impact. It's, it's huge. And, um-
Can I also say that I think it would impact financially, like the fiscal piece of it, because I would, I would want to know what's the percentage on maybe like workman's comp claims for teachers. We've had teachers injured. And I know there have been things filed. Like, I would think you'd want to look at all of that and make some big decisions. So it, I'm, I'm glad that we have the task force in place. I'm glad that, I'm hearing we're going to have some type of behavior matrix that's consistent across the district. I think that will make a huge difference. And, and, you know, some, it might not be a popular opinion out there to hear, but some parent responsibilities that are put into place.
I'm expecting a, a change, a stringent change. And, and I'm looking forward to the input from the folks that are on, at ground zero of all this. And that's what's coming next.
That's, that's good to hear, and I appreciate that.
It is good to hear, thank you.
And I also appreciate hearing that it's not going to be over the summer, because when I had read that one section, I'm like, mm, a lot of us, you know, some people-
That limits who can be involved.
Exactly.
Well, and it also limits, um, parent communication and feedback. And we don't want to do that.
So that's good to hear.
Yes, there's only six weeks left, but we're all really hard workers, right? We can, when we put our minds to something, we can get stuff done. So, um, we had a few conversations this morning, like, okay, how, how do we structure this? How do we get feedback from every grade level? You know, our starting point has to be something tangible, you know, that we all can agree is our starting point. It's not going to be perfect. Um, and we're all going to have different opinions. You know, that was another reason for layering in the conversation, is you get too many people in a room and you don't get anywhere. You know, we even found with the size of the group that we're like, okay, let's go back and we'll bring you a draft, because it just gets, it's difficult to, once you get over, you know, five or six people. I blame it on Garth. No. Um, so, yes, that was a, a quick, like, mm-mm, no, we can't wait till summer. It's, it's just too important, it's just, it's too critical of a time. Like, I'm watching people struggle, um, in their classrooms. And it's, that's not what we want to see, for kids or any of you. Um, it's hard to see. It's, it's tough out there right now.
And I think it's important to know that while we want to make sure, you know, parents send their kids to school and they expect the kids are going to be in a safe environment until they get home at the end of the day. And certainly, we expect that same thing with our staff and administration, that, you know, things happen, I get it. But, you know, it's, it's a little frustrating to know that we're rising to the level that we're having to file workman's comp claims. And, um, certainly, we do need to address that. And I, I feel that a district-wide policy that's a, hey, it's, this is what we're going to do in the ECLC, this is what we're going to, we're going to do the same thing in the elementary school, we're going to do the same thing in the middle school. So there's an expectation from the board that we, or there should be an expectation from the board that we're going to come up with a policy that it doesn't matter if the problem arises in one building or the other building, or the other building, it's going to be handled the exact same way, whatever that is.
And that's great to hear, too. I think, I'll put another plug in for ECLC, though. We, we don't have some of the supports that the other buildings have. We have an individual who's doing some of the role. They're not getting compensated to do it, and they're, they're doing it because they're a great individual. But we need to, we, we really do need to remedy that. We should have the same types of supports that the other-
I, I agree with that.
But I think-
And, you know, your comment, Judy, about, um, professional development and, you know, people being in the district a long time. I, I don't disagree with that, but the children are not the same. I think we can all agree that, like, they are different. And so that's why we talked about, you know, we might need some professional development on different approaches and different responses, so that everyone can be consistent, because nothing is worse for trying to address a behavior than you do handle it one way, you handle it another, and they don't know what's going to happen.
Consistency is key.
Yes, yes. I can see that.
So it wasn't meant as a, you know, a dis aura to, to the staff. It was like-
It was more around, you know, what used to be a tier one behavior is what we used to see as tier two, is now in your classroom, day in and day out. And, and what, are there other things that we can do collectively to adjust to that sort of shift in, in, you know, how kids are being raised and the exposure to technology? And, I mean, there's just so many factors there. Um, but consistency is where it's at. And honestly, we started asking people, you know, what do you have for expertise that your colleagues may not have? Because we want to look internally and honor the people who do have that expertise. Like, you have all kinds of great brain teaching and training that you teach five-year-olds. Like, teachers of older kids may not have that knowledge and could benefit. I mean, I love the brain research. So, you know, not everybody, unless you go take workshops or you have a particular interest, they don't, you don't get that as part of your typical teacher prep. So I do think even internally, you know, there's some expertise we can capitalize on and, and help each other as well. So no, I don't want to inundate you with generic PD on-
Right.
-classroom management and, you know, it, it's more the changes that we've seen in, in students, in school readiness, um, the ability to attend, you know, and how do we massage that into our favor?
All right. And I do want to be respectful of the large crowd out there. We just wanted to say thank you. We really do appreciate you taking the time to be with us. This is something we've wanted to do for a while. And really, the intention was just to create an open dialogue.
Right. And to be, have the transparency and, yeah.
Yeah, and clear things up. Sometimes we can just answer questions and, and, you know, help you give a better understanding. So-
No, thank you.
Can I ask you, like, this is not a pointed question at all, but why now? Like, you guys have had this-
We've been talking about it for a while.
Okay. I was like, was it something different over, like, this year or the other year?
Not really. I mean, it just-
You guys have brought it up at our meetings.
Yes, we've brought it up several.
There's been worse stuff going on in the district over the past five years. I'm like-
Well, and, and I think these things are increasing.
Well, we still have three minutes. I wanted us to end at 55.
So we really appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for making the time for us. Thank you very much.
Judy, you want to take your coat, though?
Yeah, I am.
I'll let them know that.
They can start coming in.
Yeah. I'll just figure we file them all in the backend, because you know the whole crowd's going to leave once we-
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 6th School Board Meeting. We have lots of visitors because we have lots of exciting things to do tonight. So we're gonna go ahead and get started, and Mr. Boardman's going to introduce our pledges.
I am. So really, it's a great way to kind of kick off this meeting in particular. And I guess over the last couple of years, I've been able to do this, which is to start this meeting with introducing a couple of pledges who are two of our 4th grade students who will just share a little bit of some reflections about their time at BEES. So we have Autumn and Jacob. If you guys want to come on up here. So Autumn and Jacob are two 4th grade students, and I would just say, in general, they certainly embody everything that we celebrate and would hope that our BEES students are when they kind of move on from us and move up to the middle school. In the classroom, hardworking students, classroom leaders, they both participate in a number of extracurricular activities, whether it's athletics, band, chorus. One of them is a junior coach, one of them is an ambassador. So just, again, all around, really amazing, amazing citizens and the type of students that we, you know, want to continue to support and see do amazing things for their community. So I just want them to introduce themselves, and then they're gonna share a little bit of their own reflections, and then we'll go ahead and do the pledge from there. So.
Good evening. I'm Autumn Forrest, a 4th grader at BEES. I'm here to talk about my experience at BEES. My number-one favorite memory was making all my friends, who made my time at BEES even more fun. My second favorite memory was when my friend Blake and I sang the National Anthem at one of the community meetings. What I'm going to miss is saying hi to all my old teachers. What I'm also going to miss is being a junior coach. It was so much fun running the recess games and playing with the little kids. Another thing I'm going to miss is the UA teachers. The UAs were so fun, but I'm also really excited to go to the BMS. What I'm looking forward to at BMS is going to different classes. I am also looking forward to having a locker. I am really sad to leave BEES, but excited for what's ahead. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jacob Ramsey. The four years at BEES have been the best years of my life. Some days were tough, some days were amazing, but my friends and teachers at the end of the day were there for me. My teachers have taught me so much that my mind is going to explode with knowledge. The reason my friends and I have made it to 4th grade is because of great teachers like Mrs. Lister, Mrs. Byron, Mrs. Hattick, and Mrs. Smith, and so many more. In 1st grade, we used toys to help us learn math. In 2nd grade, my favorite part was Miss Byron picking out great books to read to us. In 3rd grade, I loved how many different subjects were blended together. In 4th grade, I got to work with my friends while learning. That is why they call BEES the best. Next year, I will go to the middle school, and I am looking forward to switching classes throughout the day and having my own locker, but I will remember my four years at BEES.
Well, stand up and join us in saying the pledge.
My virtual allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming to have a little bit of appreciation of the flag. It was great to hear your reflections about the school. I wish you the best of luck in 5th grade. Enjoy those lockers. It's a key highlight, but thanks for being the awesome students that you've been and doing like this. You put up the great work.
All right, Champions for Children. Who's next? Laura's going to do the honors.
Wow, this is fun. So I have the honor of recognizing Tracy and Carly, so come join me. So I'm not alone here. And Janice. So, you know, COVID happened, and it was tricky times, and I try not to think a whole lot about it, honestly, but some good things came out of COVID. And one memory for me was Carly and I going down into the woods behind the ECLC, which at one point had trails, but there were no longer trails, and traipsing through and, you know, coming out, kind of bleeding a little bit as we went through the prickers and tried to figure out how we could create outdoor learning for students. So since that moment, a lot has happened, thanks to these two Champions for Children. So this award is given on behalf of the school board and the district, and I just want to share a few words. And it's a little lengthy, but it's worth every word. So I've heard this before, but yeah. It is with great enthusiasm and admiration that we recognize Carly Wilcox and Tracy Ramsey as recipients of the Barrington School District Champion for Children Award. Their dedication to creating a nature-based learning culture in the Barrington School District has profoundly impacted both our students and educators at the ECLC and BEES. Through their collaboration with the Four Winds Institute and Professional Learning Community Program, Carly and Tracy have united educators across our district who are passionate about incorporating nature-based learning into their classrooms. This work has opened the doors to nature-based learning opportunities, seamlessly blending outdoor exploration with meaningful academic instruction in science, literacy, math, and social-emotional development. In addition to their work in classrooms, Carly and Tracy have secured grants that directly support the expansion of nature-based learning in our schools. They have also created a nature-based play and learning family playgroup with the ECLC, offering families a joyful and enriching way to explore the outdoors together. Their vision further extends to the development of a week-long nature-based exploration camp for students in preschool through grade 5, providing hands-on learning and adventure during the summer months. Thanks to their dedication and hard work, students now experience curriculum in new and engaging ways. Whether tapping trees, exploring woodland trails, or participating in hands-on science lessons, the joy and excitement of our students' faces are undeniable. These experiences go far beyond academic gains. They support the whole child, nurturing a deeper connection with the natural world and enhancing students' self-regulation, curiosity, and love of learning. I'll also add that teachers really love to be outside, too. Carly and Tracy are not only facilitators of enriching students' experiences, they are leaders who empower educators by modeling, coaching, and sharing resources. Their passion and knowledge, combined with their warmth, humor, and commitment to collaboration, have helped shift mindsets and broaden what teaching and learning can look like here in Barrington. Both Carly and Tracy have immersed themselves in our schools, and because of them, we are better. Their influence is wide-reaching and deeply felt, and it is only fitting that they be recognized for their exceptional efforts with the Champion for Children Award. So congratulations.
So there's a lovely plaque, and I'm gonna...
I know we're waiting for the cookie.
Yes. George does an excellent job, and like, she left our district, but hasn't left our district because she keeps making these cookies.
Thank you so much.
To prepare the cookie to the plaque.
My kids took a reading all day for the...
Can we talk about the artwork on top of that?
I was just looking at this. This is beautiful, impressive.
No, she's really upping her game.
Where is she?
She's right there.
This is beautiful.
Thank you so much.
It's beautiful.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you for being a part of your district.
Thank you. And thank you, Laura, for being an awesome admin who helped support it, too.
Thank you.
Do you have a few of the gourds? I don't mind.
All right, we'll keep it moving. Good evening. My name is Karen Mattel, and I'm here with the Barrington School Foundation with our volunteers Angela, Nikki, Libby, Kelly, Tracy, and Janine. The Barrington School Foundation is a local, all-volunteer organization that's a nonprofit, and our goal is to support Barrington's children and educators. Our flagship initiative is early literacy. We partner with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, and Barrington children up to age 5 who are registered receive a book in the mail each month. We host early literacy events like story walks and pajama parties. Since the beginning of the school foundation 25 years ago, we've given out over 34,000 books to Barrington children and educators. The school foundation supports innovation and educational projects, and we collaborate with other organizations to support Barrington's children. For example, we create summer essentials bags for participants in the End 68 Hours of Hunger program, giving them reading materials and educational games and crafts at the beginning of the summer. We also love to collaborate with the ECLC and the library to do community events like the Polar Express. But the reason we're here tonight is because we also do awards in Excellence in Education. Since 2003, the school foundation has presented awards to educators who go above and beyond. We want to celebrate how hard they work, their ability to reach and connect with students, their creativity, and how they make the Barrington schools so amazing. In years past, we rotated between the schools and presented one award, but this year marks the 25th anniversary of the organization's founding, and we wanted to recognize educators in each building. We asked for input from staff, we consulted with the leadership team, and it was so much fun to come up with the this year's three amazing recipients. Each recipient will receive a plaque, a $500 check from the school foundation, and, most importantly, the cookie from George and Laura. We're gonna read through each recipient from the ECLC, the elementary school and the middle school, and then we'll give you the awards at the end, so you guys can just relax and sit back, and we'll start with the ECLC.
Thank you.
It is with great pride and deep appreciation that we, as both board members of the Barrington School Foundation and staff members of the Early Childhood Learning Center, present Courtney Irvine with the Excellence in Education Award. Courtney is a remarkable educator whose presence in our school makes a profound difference each and every day. Courtney goes above and beyond for the students in our school. She works with some of our most behaviorally complex and emotionally vulnerable learners and does so with unwavering love, consistency, and commitment. She has a unique ability to make strong, trusting connections with students, creating relationships rooted in mutual respect and safety. Because of this, students thrive in her care, both academically and in their social-emotional growth.
She is tough when needed, firm in her expectations, and always deeply loving. Our students know that she believes in them, and they respond with confidence, improved behavior, and increased willingness to engage and learn. Her calm demeanor and skilled approach to behavior coaching not only supports students in real time, but helps them build lifelong strategies for regulation and resilience. Courtney is always seeking to learn, grow, and adapt. She regularly attends workshops and returns with fresh ideas, new strategies, and a sense of renewed inspiration. Her dedication to continued learning strengthens our entire team and shows in her evolving, thoughtful approach to student support.
Courtney wears many hats, literally and figuratively. She's a special education paraprofessional, behavior coach, a mentor, a shoulder to lean on, a motivator, a collaborator, and a cheerleader for both students and staff. And we can't help but mention her ever-growing collection of T-shirts with uplifting sayings and her incredible flair for a good costume. Whether she's showing up in a fun getup or spreading a message of encouragement through her wardrobe, she brings joy and positivity to our building in every way possible. Courtney is the heart of our school community. She brings laughter, light, and leadership to our team, and we simply don't know what we do without her. For all these reasons and so many more, we are honored to present Courtney with the Excellence in Education Award.
Amanda Ludwig's passion, creativity, and unwavering dedication to her students are nothing short of inspiring. She pours so much love and enthusiasm into her students and teaching. In her classroom, music is more than just notes and rhythms. It is the space where students can feel seen, celebrated, and empowered to express themselves. Her ability to connect with every child, from our youngest learners to our oldest elementary students, is truly a gift. Amanda always goes above and beyond when it comes to educating the students at BEES. She engages her students in all classes by exploring instruments, styles, genres of music, and by incorporating movement and art into her lessons. Amanda works hard to reach all learners and has been instrumental in helping to de-escalate students through the use of music. Amanda has collaborated with colleagues to bring drums alive to our school, fostering physical, social, emotional, and brain health. Amanda teaches chorus, recorders, and facilitates plays, collaborates to organize the amazing performances for the month of March in the school lobby, and can often be observed giving on-the-spot mini lessons on pianos and ukuleles. She inspires students to be curious about music and to challenge themselves to try something new with confidence and a smile.
Her impact doesn't stop at the classroom door. Mrs. Ludwig brings music to life for the entire school community. Every performance showcases the student's talent, but also her dedication to them. She has transformed the traditional 4th grade holiday concert into an electrifying, trans-Siberian orchestra-style light show, making audiences in awe. She's turned the 3rd grade recorder concert into a full-on square dancing hoedown full of energy, laughter, and joy. She even once strapped a cardboard shrub to her back to blend into the scenery, ensuring the spotlight stayed where it belonged on her 2nd grade performance. Amanda Sparks' curiosity builds confidence and always encourages students to try something new with a smile. Excuse me, it's really hard. I feel so emotionally connected to her right now. I'm very sorry. Amanda Sparks' curiosity builds confidence and always encourages students to try something new with a smile. Her creativity knows no bounds. Her dedication is unmatched, and her impact on our students, staff, and families is lasting. We are so grateful for the countless lives she has touched, the confidence she has helped build, and the joy she brings to our school community. It is our honor to present the 2025 Excellence in Education Award to the incredibly talented, dedicated, and fabulous Amanda Ludwig.
I always volunteer, and then I cry through all... I always have to go last because on BMS, I'm a gun for punishment, I guess, but I love it, and I'm glad to be here. I get to read Mrs. Towns' incredible letter nominating Jen Middell at the Barrington Middle School. So I'm gonna skip the part where she introduces herself, but Jen begins each day with a fresh perspective, always ready to greet her students with renewed energy and a positive mindset. Her ability to reflect on what's working and what can be improved demonstrates her deep commitment to continuous growth, not only for herself, but for every student she supports. Whether it's refining reading lessons or adjusting individual plans, Jen is always focused on creating the best learning experiences possible. She goes above and beyond to find meaningful and creative ways for her students to demonstrate their knowledge and skills. I've seen that. Her deep understanding of her students allows her to anticipate their needs and provide support even before it's requested. Jen consistently meets her students where they are, ensuring each one has the tools and encouragement to succeed each day. Her dedication extends far beyond the classroom. She is one of the hardest-working individuals in our building. Always prepared, always present, always ready to help however she can, at the plays, volunteering, even I have kids in the district, so I'm often there, but your kids aren't, and you're there volunteering, which is amazing. Her adaptability is remarkable. She adjusts not just day by day, but hour by hour to meet the ever-changing needs of her students and team. Jen works with outside providers to best help her students with a full wraparound approach. As a colleague, Jen is incredibly supportive and collaborative. She's a true team player who brings out the best in those around her. Her professionalism is unmatched, particularly when it comes to meeting the rigorous demands of special education timelines and paperwork. She handles every aspect of her role with care, precision, and excellence. Jen is not only a teacher, she is an advocate, a cheerleader, a collaborator, and a role model. Her passion and work ethic make her an invaluable part of our school community, and we are incredibly fortunate to have her on our team. Congratulations, Jen, on this well-deserved recognition. Your dedication does not go unnoticed, and we are so proud to celebrate you.
I'll get some pictures outside with everybody.
Is it still raining or not?
It's nature-based learning night. Get our little mud suits on.
Listen, we're not at the she shed. Thank you all for all you do. Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You are, of course, all welcome to stay.
Seriously, I would just think the same thing. It was like, how do you get more people to see that? Let's do it something other time. Actually, there's more people here than there are at the delivery section.
Well, that's what I mean. You tripled the attendees.
No, but they should hand this out at a meeting that like, where more people see it. Like at a concert or something. They go on the nip?
I think we are. Does it pause, Jeff?
Oops. How is their plan after you?
Do you want it paused until Vienna comes back?
I think so. So we're just gonna pause until the superintendent returns? Hi, welcome back. Sorry, we thought that might be a little bit longer, but the superintendent has returned, so we'll carry on. We're up to approval agenda. Is there anything that needs to be... All right, so can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes.
I know we have some acronym adjustments, so other than that, I will amend those.
Make a motion to accept with the noted changes.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we do not have a high school rep present.
Do not see code.
Something must have come up. We do not have a select board member. So we're up to public comment online? We just turn to the people in person first?
Nothing else?
Anyone online, any hands? I don't see any, but they're very far away, and I'm very old. Okay. General Assurance of Federal Programs.
So this is that yearly grant assurances that we sign off on. However, given pending litigation, I did add to your seats an email that I just received yesterday from NHSBA encouraging us that if we had a second meeting in May to wait until after the 19th, which thankfully, we have a meeting on the 20th, to actually go ahead and potentially, depending on what happens with litigation, go ahead and initial and sign off on that. I think it's been two, maybe three years now that we're now required within that document to indicate the board meeting in which we reviewed it, and then Moira and I have to sign off.
Sign our lights away, yeah.
So I did already sign it. I will just adjust the meeting date for two weeks from now. So as opposed to amending the agenda, I just thought it was important to talk that through and indicate the why we were postponing.
Could I have a motion to table that until the May 20th meeting?
Let's table that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Up to nominations. Such good news.
Great news. We are, so I will say that we added the Power School extension for hiring, and Power School bought out School Spring. So we're continuing to populate to add jobs, but the process... You've heard me say it a few times this year, we're getting driven to now to the 80s from a paperwork perspective.
I'm just going to point out that Moira Taylor suggested subscribing to School Spring.
Yes, you did. Eight years ago.
Correct as usual, King Friday.
Absolutely. Unfortunately, School Spring in and of itself was fairly pricey back in the day, but because we already have Power School and now that extension with their purchase of School Spring makes it much more affordable, which is great, but we're still learning. There's still components of the program that we are working through. But our goal was to have this layer open to receive applicants, and it has really been fabulous. So tonight, you have three nominations in front of you. Curriculum Coordinator, just to get that actual finalized vote on the books in public record. And then we also have 8th grade English Language Arts Teacher at the middle school, and 7th and 8th grade School Counselor for the middle school as well.
Then, do you want all three of them together?
I think we could do that unless anyone has issue with that.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve nomination of the new Curriculum Coordinator, 8th grade ELA teacher, and 7th, 8th grade School Counselor.
Second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome to Barrington, Emily, Sarah, and Rebecca.
See how your report stuck? Hopefully, I can shift my brain here. So the majority of my report is actually the family correspondence that I sent out. So it is repetitive information for the board because I had been doing that as part of superintendent notes for the past couple of meetings. So I won't review that piece because you all have already heard it, and it's out there for public consumption. So I'll just review the front page, the highlights there. So from a hiring perspective, I think I feel pretty good about the movement we've made so far. So, you know, it's early May, so we still have some time. I will say that our Speech and Language Assistant position that has been open and on the books for quite some time, we have applicants this year. So we are super excited about that because that's just been a little missing piece for us in the district. So that is exciting. We did repost the woodworking tech ed position at the middle school as a STEM position. You know, just like Family Consumer Science, it's just one of those crafts that is, people don't have the certification, and they're just not, we're not, we have zero applicants, and it's been posted. That was one of the first ones we had posted. So we're hoping that STEM twist on it may bring us some applicants. Ms. Talon and I have had some conversation around, much like we did with the Computer Science position this year, you know, what do we do if? So looking at where, what do our students need for skills, and you know, how can we fulfill some of those needs? So I may be coming back to you to talk about re-categorizing a position. You know, it's a UA within the rotation. So we'll continue to be creative and problem-solve that as we go. So that's the one area that we just have not had a lot of luck. They've had some interviews for math and special education, have not, at the middle school level, haven't landed on the candidate that they want to bring forward at this point. And I know that elementary has School Counselor position interviews scheduled coming up as well. The ECLC kindergarten teacher position, plenty of applicants for that. However, we may be having some internal transition, and so we haven't started that interview process because we want to let those pieces settle out before we do that. We did add nurse substitute to our list of the ongoing, always-posted paraprofessionals and substitutes for classrooms, just because even with the 60% position, there's always a day here and there that just goes uncovered. But a huge thank you for the support of that position because it has really just been a fabulous addition this year in being able to support some of our students with greater medical needs. So that has been wonderful. I just noticed that I somehow blanked on the financial update. It is blank, so I will give you a quick one. I was doing this before vacation, to be honest. We are continuing to really closely monitor this year's budget, holding off on some purchases right up until the last minute. We are holding steady with being able to fund our facilities, capital reserve, and, but it's going to be tight. We're going to be right down to the bottom line. So, you know, when taxpayers hear, oh, you have about a $300,000, you know, or $400,000 surplus, I just want to remind people that that's 1%. It's pretty tight. So that's where we are financially. Committee, you will notice that the packet is rather thick tonight because of policy. The majority of what's in there are recommendations for rescinding, so I'll go into that in more detail when we get to policy. And let's see, wellness, no new updates there. We're still awaiting the Oyster River contract to return from the Department of Ed. I asked for some follow-up on that today because we did get the Dover one back, and they went in in a similar timeframe. So I'm not sure why that's not back. It's not anything to do with us or Oyster River. It's just sitting somewhere in Concord. So we'll follow up on that. The Portrait of a Learner work, the statewide video that was done that is being adapted to Barrington. Oh my goodness, I got to listen to the video recordings. I can't even wait to hear it when it's done. So you have, we have a student kindergarten through 8th grade who all read like the same script. Huge thank you to Christina DeVela, like worked some technology magic, and also her understanding of children to be able to, you know, she would like whisper the line to the littles, and then they would repeat it. So what Dave Cartoonin will do from Cartoonin Ed is sort of pick the best clips from each of that and then stream together and give those students, you know, credits at the end of that video. So that will be a great addition to our website when it is complete.
When do you expect that to happen?
He's pretty much done. It was just the clipping, so I'm hoping in the next month, maybe. He was backlogged a couple of weeks, but then, once he got on it. So I'll, it's only a few minutes long, so I'll show it when it's done at an upcoming meeting.
Oh, good.
So it'll be, it'll be pretty cool. We did have a town collaboration meeting on the 24th. So some of the highlights from that group net metering. I know the Select Board unanimously recommended joining onto the Community Power Coalition. So I've reached out to Paul Panish and also had Vicki pull our kilowatt usage for the past year. Paul will go into the details around it, but essentially, we have a guaranteed 12.5% savings or bill credit, and there's no long-term commitment versus a 12-month exit kind of strategy if for some reason things were to change and we didn't want to be part of it. So based on what the town had shared, it sounded like a no-brainer, but we'll let him do that presentation if he's available on the 20th and have you all make that decision. But it sounded like a good financial...
He was going to come in and talk like 15 minutes.
Yeah, it's a quick, yeah. Let's see, we talked about the tax rate a little bit. The piece that people need to remember is the June bill is just half of your previous year's bill, and the December bill is where you realize the increases from the budgets. Both the town and the school budgets got approved in March. So I think we all know that because we all cringe a little because that's right in the middle of our budget cycle time. So something just for us to all keep in mind. Connor was sharing with us that he's anticipating about a 25% higher December bill than the June bill. So I think taxpayers are going to feel that pretty substantially. So that's not necessarily great news, just reality there. And then we had a pretty detailed discussion around fuel usage and the town's plans on attempting to expand that. It'll be a couple-year process. But there's, just like we're noticing with our, realizing with our generator, there's some outdated components there. It's a key-based system. You can't replace it. So it's like people guard it with their lives. But we just reached out to the bus company to ask if they are able or if they currently get the government rate for fuel. And if not, how, what would the cost savings be if we were to adjust the contract if the buses were to come and fuel here as opposed to with them? So that might not be something that we're able to do until the next transportation contract, which is, depending on how quickly the town piece goes, it'll be somewhat in line with when they're able to expand that anyway. So we have some irons in the fire as far as some collaboration and financial savings, which is fantastic. We did have a tentative meeting. Jason and Carrie and I, from a negotiations perspective, just start to brainstorm. We tabled that because there's just so many unknowns with what's going on with House Bill 297 and health insurance that we just, we would have just been spinning our wheels like smiling at each other that day because why meet when you would have been just doing what-ifs at the table? So June 9th, just to remind everybody, is when Counselor John Stephen will come forward to talk with the Select Board regarding the New Hampshire Department of Transportation denial around the Reduced Speed School Zone signs that we requested on 9 and 125. And he feels pretty confident that he'll be able to get the state to overturn that. So that was some good news there. And we just had some brainstorming around, you know, that we can't have a crosswalk going from BMS over to the complex. And the property manager is very willing to have open dialogue. There's some residents over there that are willing to kind of monitor kids. So for right now, the immediate step we put into place is middle school just doesn't release the walkers until buses and drivers have cleared, so we don't have that conflict. But certainly still a concern having those students cross Route 9. So we're just thinking of some somewhat clever things, like some districts Connor was sharing, you know, have like a bucket on one side of the street with flags, and then students literally carry the flag over just so they're more visible to crossing, you know, with cars there. Given the accident that just happened right at that entrance, we just want to do everything we can to keep kids as safe as possible there.
As a follow-up to that, certainly Connor had expressed the desire that any of the school board members that could, would be willing to go to that meeting that night to show their support for wanting to, Commissioner Stephen, to show him our support of getting some traffic signs in there. It would be appreciated.
What's the date on that one?
The 9th.
Monday, Monday, the 9th.
And then we were all in agreement that Malago and Ramsdale, given that those are town roads and not state roads, we can certainly put signage up there. The district needs a refresh with signage all around. We have to really look at what the mandates are and make some adjustments to where some of them were placed, and some just are tired and you can't read them. And, you know, there's just like some of the location of signs, like at the ECLC or down low on these low posts, not prominently, you know, visual. So instead of piecemealing it, Joe's going to do a whole, you know, all four buildings, just walk around, look through of what we are required and then also should do, especially with the gate back here, and then looking at the cost of Reduced Speed signs on those two roads as well. So that is looking more like a summer project at this point.
And it sounded like he was, Connor, was willing to use some town funds to help make that happen too.
Yeah, so we're going to cost out from a speed zone perspective, you know. Getting just a metal-printed sign is a pretty minor cost. But we also know that people see those when they're new, and, I mean, every driver, right? Probably all of us. Once it's a route you travel all the time, you don't really see it anymore unless it's flashing at you or saying, hey, slow down. So we're going to look at the cost of all of them. They don't, it's not easy to find online. They want to like give you quotes and come out and look. But we suspect that the electrified ones will be pretty costly. So we'll have to look into what we're able to do there.
You've got to throw your weight behind that like you did the sign at the middle school.
Quick?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this was a really in-depth, great conversation. We talked about a lot of different things that day.
That's awesome.
And even though a couple of those conversations aren't bearing immediate fruit.
Yep.
It's the type of thing that as the town grows, the seeds have been planted, right? So.
And that's just, you know, the, I think the intent of the committee, right?
Right.
It's that big picture, whether it's short-term or long-term conversations that we should be having. And I think we have a great group of people dedicated at the table that are really thinking about all the options, so. And I learn something new from Connor every time we meet, so it's actually kind of fun. I know, a little strange, but, you know, he pulls up a map and, you know, shows us things and all kinds of ideas.
Draws on the board.
Draws on my whiteboard.
Well, you should reciprocate. You've got to bring an interesting fact, fun fact of the day to every meeting.
Okay, okay.
Well, did you know this, Connor? And then we're gale home about Tales of Education.
Well, he and I meet separately.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what we do. I talk about the school, you know, policy end of things and he brings up town stuff and then all of a sudden, a couple hours of combine, I'm like, I have to go.
Anything else in your report?
No.
Boardman.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Great.
Welcome to see you.
Yeah. So a little update from VES, you know, just first, this enrollment and attendance, those have both stayed pretty consistent since the beginning of the year, so total enrollment still at about 409 students. Looking at the attendance, one of the things I noticed in creating this report was our number of students with five or more unexcused absences that, I didn't go all the way back, but that number of five students was actually pretty early on in the year, meaning like November-ish, and the fact that it hasn't really grown since then, I think just points to, I think, all three buildings, we're really trying to focus a little more this year and be more consistent with, you know, the steps within the policy of communicating with families and really trying to be on board with promoting the importance of daily attendance. So, you know, while you'd always love that number to be zero, it's never probably going to happen, but the fact that it has stayed pretty flat, I think, is something that we're proud of. From different grade levels, just I wanted them to share a little bit about some of the things that they have been doing in their classrooms, so just again noted that this information was sort of just from before break, so it was kind of what the grade levels were working on leading up until break. So with first grade, you know, doing a lot with nonfiction, which is really always fun to see first grade research projects and just, you know, their, their take on, you know, diving into like animal facts and then trying to create, you know, a report on it at a first grade level is, it's, it's really neat to watch their, their minds sort of wrap around what that looks like. It's been a tradition for me since I've been here, but always during that Earth Week time, having folks from the transfer station volunteer and come in and do a whole morning of activities with the first grade students is always great and, you know, anytime that we can kind of collaborate with people in the town like that, it's just, it's, it's good for everybody. Second grade, right, so you go from the research of first grade to the imagination of a second grader, so a little more like narrative free writing and really tapping into their imagination and some of the like, you know, crazy stories that they kind of create on their own. And also at that level too, going through like the draft process, right, so that is new to them, like I'm going to, you know, write a few sentences, probably which are not all that legible, right? And then I'm going to get feedback, whether it's from other kids or from the teacher, and then I'm going to go back and sort of redraft that, that whole sort of craftsmanship piece is, you know, sort of new to them, and I think that's their first opportunity that they're really working on that. Third grade, Because When Dixie is definitely a hit, it is a very emotionally driven book for a lot of people, but it's also sort of a staple, so when you see them working on their classic. And then fourth grade, just talking about maps, you know, working on their mapping and I feel like I was in a part of the game show of are you smarter than trying to name the counties in New Hampshire? That's, I think I was missing a couple, but just, you know, bringing you back to the work that they're doing. On that note, I think one of the things to really highlight about Earth Week too, and, you know, we saw Tracy and Carly recognized today for all their efforts, but the, they were able to bring Earth Day activities to, to the school, so they were all outdoors, some of it was actually in, like out in the woods with different activities, some of it was even just like reading in nature, but there were other activities as well. And so we had 22 of our classrooms participate in 68 different activities during that week, so just kind of getting kids outdoors, doing a little more hands-on science, but then also literacy and writing, but in nature. So just proud to be able to offer that to our kids, but also just appreciate the classroom teachers sort of being willing to take that risk and step outside with their kids and, you know, we didn't lose anybody in the woods, so it was success, success. From a behavior standpoint at MTSSB, really the focus here is the work that we continue to do with not just our ambassadors and junior coaches, but also just throughout the building with more positive-minded sort of reinforcement. And so right now we're doing our Barry's Wall of Fame, and so each week we kind of nominate or, or different classrooms get nominated and the winning classroom, so they get nominated based on as a whole group, just their like following of our basics, whether it's in the hallway, right, so sort of, you know, maintaining a quiet tone in the hallway, walking in the hallway, being respectful of other people in the hallway, in the cafeteria, you know, just noise level, cleaning up their area, things like that. And so the winning classrooms each week get one of our plushed sort of Barry stuffed animals and it becomes sort of their classroom pet for the week. You can see the picture and your board report has all the classrooms sort of posing with it, and there's some different activities that go along that the class can do around identifying, you know, the things that they did in order to sort of be recognized for that, and then also like advice that they have, sort of passing Barry on to the next classroom. So just some of the stuff that we've really done this year to promote a more positive and healthy school environment. The last thing I want to touch on is just work, so Lori Benincasa, I think I have mentioned before, so Lori Benincasa this year did an administrative internship with me, so current first grade teacher, and through her work at this point through Keene State, needed to do sort of a culminating internship, just like a teacher would, in order to get her administrative license. And as part of that, she had to do an impact project, and so her and I spent some time talking and meeting about different types of projects that she was interested in, but also would be impactful for the, for the school. And one of the things that we sort of reflected on and came to was like the great success that we have when we have concert performances or when we do open house or when there's a meat, meat bingo going on, right, like your pizza bingo going on, different things, and it really just pulls out a lot of people. However, when we have in the past offered curriculum nights or things that are more academic-minded, the turnout does not, isn't as great.
This is surprising to you?
It's not surprising, it's frustrating, right? So because you want to try and engage families, right, on all levels of their kid, and we want.
Curriculum bingo?
Not curriculum bingo.
Okay.
So what we landed on was this idea of sort of targeting like a certain group of parents and not like an age range, right? So we wanted families with kids who are a little bit older, and we weren't focusing on our curriculum as much as we were focusing on how we could help families support their kids' literacy at home. And so this idea was sort of born of creating this family literacy book club. And, you know, I take zero credit for it because it was definitely all Lori's work and really her brainchild, but there was a lot of other staff who sort of pitched in to help, but it was actually done over a series of, of a couple of months. And the first step was, right, putting out the survey, getting a list of families, and I think there was 39 kids from 37 families, I think was the number. So just that alone was far more than we actually anticipated was going to sign up for this. And then from there, we, she hosted basically in, like an academic-minded literacy night just for the parents, right? So the kids weren't going to be part of that, it was more to teach the parents about how to help them facilitate the book reading at home. So it taught them about some of the finer aspects of literacy and, you know, just what the book club would entail. There was then a time period where the families at home sort of read through the book, and then there was a culminating experience where kids and families came together and we, she sort of had set up a series of different activity stations, you know, similar to how you would try to facilitate a book discussion, but wanting to do it more family-friendly. So in the report, there's just some, some quotes that I, you know, thought were, were important, just about having a great time, how it, you know, changed how the family Apparently a few of the parents got together and decided to keep a book club going, right, so just sort of that idea, and that's exactly what we want, is sort of to continue that on. Part of what Lori had to do for her project was also collect some data as well, and so I just wanted to share a few, I won't go through everything with you, but a few, because I just think it's like an interesting, just this one sort of event with, again, we're talking of the grand scheme of the building, we're talking about, right, 20%-ish of the population, but of those people that in, in, in April, of those families, that there were no caregivers, that reported reading to their children zero days per week, right? So like every person responded that they read with their kid at least one time a week, which was actually a pretty significant increase from what it was the initial data in February, right, where you had about, you know, 20% of people said that, you know, no, they don't read with their kid, but that, so now that's, that changed that. There was about a, almost a 20% increase in the number of parents who reported discussing books that they read at home with their children at least five days per week. So it went from about 25%, almost up to 50% of these families reported that every day they are talking about the books their kids are reading either together or that they're reading independently at home, so just having those literacy discussions at home and how important that is. And I, I think that this is super helpful, is that there was almost a 20% increase in the number of parents who reported feeling knowledgeable and equipped to support their third and fourth graders' reading growth. So we, again, noting that as a smaller sample, but, you know, just sort of playing out how that might look, having families at home and having that many more families feel that much more comfortable to support their, their kids' literacy growth at home was just, just really neat to see. So I just appreciate, you know, Lori and, and the other staff who helped her sort of put this on and facilitate it, but just proud of the work that she did and that we were able to connect with our families that way. And as we wind up to the, you know, last six weeks of school, it is a busy time in all the buildings and everywhere, you know, we have a lot of events and, you know, excited about, we have a theater group coming in to do some performances at the end of this week and then go into each one of the classrooms and just sort of work on connecting social emotional learning with literacy and sort of public speaking at all grade levels, one through four. We have a giant map event, so if anybody's been to Historical Society and seen the literally giant map of New Hampshire that is there, that is going to be in our gym, so classrooms will have a chance to do some work with it, but then it'll also be an evening time event as well. So again, trying to do some curriculum-minded or academic-minded activities to get families and their, their children connected that way. And there's some fun stuff too, right? Lot of, a lot of field trips coming up at the end of the year, obviously spring concerts are coming up, clearly Field Day is on everybody's minds, and, and so we're just, we're really excited about the last six weeks of school and. All I got.
Sounds good.
So I'll give you a general like why there's a pile of rescinded policies in front of you. I do have notes on every single one, if you want me to go through every single one, but the last couple of years, our approach has been to go folder by folder and policies are just changing so rapidly right now that we felt like in order to sort of see through the forest, we needed to just do a sweep through all the folders and clean up what pieces were, you know, obsolete, optional, have content that's now in other policies and making adjustments to call numbers as well. So that massive list that you have, starting with ACR all the way down through KLA, fall in those categories. They're either optional, obsolete, no longer, well, I guess that's what obsolete means, or their, their call numbers have changed. So that's that whole list. And then the ones for first read are keeping in line with, again, changes that have happened more recently, so we've used NHSBA's recommendations around the core requirements for home education, instruction, access to public school programs by non-public charter school and home educated pupils, and then JIC is supposed to say student conduct, not student council, so I will adjust that before the final, we post the final packet, I'll make sure that agenda is clear there. So the reason we jumped there is because of the Behavior Task Force, we want to ensure that our matrices and plans that we put in place are also in line with required policy and then any policy that we want to revisit as a result of that. So we will jump into JICD, student discipline and due process, next, but you can see we went through a lot the last time we met, so.
Caduce to you folks for doing this.
I will say that, been doing the silly Policy Committee for a number of years and usually a lot of the changes are just, you know, a little bit of wording, you're like, why, you know, but it's crazy, like just the amount of.
It's hard right now.
Papers that are getting shuffled around right now. So good, kudos for staying on top of it.
So would you like to make a?
Yeah, sure. I'd like to make a motion to rescind the following policies, ACR, ADR, EBAA, EEAC-R, EDB, EEL, EFD, GCMC, GDBE, GDI, JEC, JICH-A, JICH-B, JK, JKA, JKC, JLI, and KLA. That one, the lone policy.
Can you read that one more time, please?
Want me to?
No.
Can you repeat it back to me, remember?
Second motion.
Any discussion? Are all those in favor?
Aye.
And then for first read, I'd like to make a motion to accept IHBG, JJJ, and JIC.
Second that.
Jay didn't get bolded.
I see that.
As amended.
As amended.
Second that.
JJ.
Did you hear Jason second?
Jason, yep.
Okay. All right, any discussion?
Nah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we are up to opportunity two for public comment. Again, anything from the public? All right, anything online? Give you a few seconds, if you want to raise your hand. Seeing none.
Citing RSA 91-A3, comma, 2A. Non-public.
Not good.
Okay, any discussion? All right, so.
Jason Baker, aye. Svenson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Walker, aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.